Well, folks, shall we get at it? We will say the pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good morning, everyone. Good white morning. Shall I get a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I will second that. Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Team an' aye.
Vols, aye.
The minutes. Did you only have a chance to look at both sets?
I did. I looked at two sets a minute.
About one I had to minimize, obviously.
Definitely.
That female did come through, so yes, I did see those. I did not notice any irregularities. So I would move to accept the minutes. I will second that.
Call for a vote on the minutes.
Tippit, aye.
Team an' aye.
Vols, aye.
I like this, flying right through. Uh, let's jump down to number eight. Sadly, to hear this one.
She's been pondering it, obviously, when we're gonna miss her. Now's the time we're implementing the new payroll, getting it all converted over, so we're just kinda stepped up and taken the lead on the payroll. Do we have our last day will be the May 30th?
Motion to acknowledge.
I would make the motion to acknowledge Nancy Jorgerson's retirement from the auditor's office, and her last day will be May 30th of 2025. Second.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Team an' aye.
Vols, aye.
Yeah.
One, two.
She'll need to spend more time with her grandbaby and kind of jealous. You wanna do, um, number nine quick?
Okay.
I'm looking at April 22nd at 9:30 in the morning.
Okay.
Has to be done by the 30th, so that should give me plenty of time to get the proper thing in the paper and us to finalize all of our...
Can we really hit on the 29th?
22nd.
22nd.
Yep. I always like that extra week in case the newspaper messes up or something happens and we gotta republish.
So Tuesday for 22nd?
9:30?
9:30.
For our budget hearing?
Can I get a motion to set the date?
So moved to set the budget hearing for Tuesday morning, April 22nd at 9:30.
I will second that.
Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Team an' aye.
Vols, aye.
Karen.
So our last three vehicles came in.
Copies of all three vehicles.
Um, you'll notice on there some of the amounts are lower. Traded in five vehicles? So let's save this, or save about, well, he gave us 10,000 for three Durangos and Impala, and that'll pick up. So... In the total, I think I handwritten on the bottom for you guys, that's the total for the three, the last three Durangos. Do they come in here just to get a...
Yeah, because the claims were just done, so he needs to get permission for a handwrite for us to issue a claim before our next claim.
Radio Communications has two vehicles. They came and got them last week, so those should be done in just another handful of days, and everything's coming in, so we're...
On the last three?
These are the last three, but the first three, two of them are getting outfitted right now.
You've got four left to go though.
Yep, yep, but all the, all the stuff's been coming in, so it's, I think now we're gonna really start moving on them. He figured, he took two and he said it'd be about a week and a half, so not terrible.
Right, can I get a motion to approve the handwritten checks, ties, orders, and then go ahead and say the amount, and the public knows?
I will make a motion to approve the handwritten check for ties and orders for the value of $123,692,000.
What was that again? I second.
I will second.
And that's three vehicles.
Gotcha, thanks. Call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Team an' aye.
Vols, aye.
Thank you. Okay, perfect.
Melinda, talk slow.
Talk slow?
Yeah.
It won't take very long.
Couple minutes ahead is gonna be.
It's okay. Hey, I'm working with some of the mobile home parks to try and get our records cleaned up. And this started back when Ann was still here. So we have two mobile homes out at Longview, that's the mobile home park in, here in Vinton, that have been destroyed and, um, hauled up. Mobile Home Park owner has destroyed them and hauled the material away. And so I need to get them off the records, and they are on county health certificates. They haven't had taxes paid on them in many, many years, because they've sat vacant for a long, long time. And one of them, the city had called me on because they were going to condemn it, because it was that bad. So I, um, we did the resolution. One of them, since the taxes haven't been paid since 2018 with the tax sale, that was just county held, those taxes are $2,492 that I would like to get abated. And on the other one, um, those were a lot less, because it's only been since '22, $1,229.
You're gonna still get them out of your computer and all the paperwork?
Yes, and now the lots are open, so now they can maybe move somebody new in with new mobile home.
Do we want the...
Yes.
Abating by resolution?
By resolution.
I would approve by resolution, 2516, to abate the taxes on two mobile homes. I'll just read it. Whereas Benton County Treasurer has reported that a mobile home have been deemed to have no value by the court pursuant to Iowa Code 562B.27 and chapters 555C.2B, and whereas there are currently tax liens filed against the properties, it has determined that it is impractical to pursue the collection of the total amounts of taxes due through the tax sale and the personal judgment remedies, and has recommended that the Board of Supervisors abate the tax on this parcel.
On the, I should say these parcels, sorry.
It is therefore resolved that the delinquent tax, penalty, interest, and cost assessed on parcels 11253355 for $2,492. And the second one is 479828, and as in Nancy0655. Is hereby abated pursuant to Iowa Code Section 445.16. The treasurer is directed to strike the amount due from the county system, and that is dated today's date, April 1st, 2025.
Is that your motion correct?
That is my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, call for a vote by resolution.
Tippit, aye.
Team an' aye.
Vols, aye.
Thank you.
Did you talk slow enough? Right on the money.
Yeah, see, I knew I'd take this one.
That's fine, okay, thank you.
Just because I touched on number seven right now real quick. I think I told you guys I checked in on the mailbox out here. We've got an eight-person mailbox, and we have ten Anadis using it right now, so there's two of them that are doubled up. So I give permission to our maintenance guys go ahead and get a 12-box, 12-person box. Uh, they notified me on Thursday of last week, that box. Post Office told me they thought it was around $800 for the new box. Okay, no problem. When they checked on it, it's $2,800.
They dropped the number.
I said, uh, ain't gonna happen. So right now I'm leaning on, I wanna get the book again to see if we can't buy a small box that I can bolt on what we got already to get by.
I have it upstairs when you're up there tomorrow.
I'll look at that after the meeting today to get real blue shit. It's gotta be cheaper.
So you're looking for one that's two or three or four or singles?
At least two, if not four. With the board alongside, and it's gotta be through the post office.
That kinda money? Yeah, that makes sense. It's just something you have to buy through postal service.
Yeah, it's gonna be kinda collected through them, because they're the ones that maintain the locks and keys and all that.
Oh, so you're gonna get one off Amazon for 20 bucks?
No, not unless you go to, you know, local hardware store and get it like a farmer's mailbox that you can't lock. They don't want that, so, which I agree. So I touched on that. Two days up to date, so... Number 15, we got Ray. We're in the public hearing, right? No, we're in...
Yep, he set the date.
Well, Ray, go ahead and start.
All right, thank you. I have two things on the agenda today, and they're both items that are intended to sort of improve services and, um, the environment in which we all work. First one is our mental health advocate. As you know, the region will not exist after the end of June, and the mental health advocate was tied into the region. By statute, we're required to have a mental health advocate. What they do, just so you know, when a person is in crisis, um, a family or law enforcement can file an emergency commitment application, which then results in the judge issuing an order to pick them up, take them to the hospital, and undergo a five-day evaluation to stabilize them. It's not a long-term treatment situation, it's just to stabilize them. They have a hearing within the five days, um, they have a lawyer appointed initially. Once that hearing is done, the lawyer is done. So then we have somebody who's being released back into the community, and it's really important that we have follow-up services for them to avoid a revolving door situation, and that's where our advocate comes into play. Our advocate is Bethany Wheaton. Okay, Bethany?
Right here.
Do you want her to come sit up here?
Sure, why not?
So Bethany's been our advocate for...
I'm gonna sit next to her.
Okay. She's been our advocate for several years, and she comes with a tremendous amount of experience and ability, and we're really lucky to have such a good advocate. Bethany, for a long time, has worked out of her home, um, which isn't, I mean, it's a ways from here. So one of the things that I discussed with Bethany and I discussed with Grace Schmidt is that maybe we should move this advocate position into the public health environment, because I think there are things that they could do in conjunction in terms of public awareness and that sort of thing that would help what Bethany does and would help, you know, the citizens in our community who need these services. So Grace was really receptive to the idea of, of basically placing the mental health within her, her area, although her board meets on the 11th and they would have to approve it. So the reason it's kinda, this is kinda coming up, is because right now Bethany's funded through, um, the mental health region and through social services, well, that's not gonna exist. So we, we need to make sure that we can still fund her position. It's a part-time position, it's not, you know, it's not a tremendous amount of outlay for the county, but it's really important work that we're doing. So I asked Bethany to come so that if you had questions for her, so you could put a face to a name, because I know Bruce, you've never met her, right?
No, I have not, no.
Yeah, so this is our advocate. You know, we really need to be supportive of her, because right now mental health is a big issue, not only in our county, but every county, and the more services we can provide to keep those people, you know, in a good place, the better. So that's, that's why we're here, is to shift the funding source. You know, if we had a place for her to come and meet with, with her clients, that would be awesome, because right now she's meeting them in courthouses or parking lots or wherever, you know, so that's a concern I have also. So do you have questions?
Okay, just so everybody's clear, can you explain that her work would not be assigned by the health?
No.
It's assigned by the courts.
She, when the mental health treatment is filed, the advocate is appointed by the court, so she has to answer to the court, she has to do reports. If, if somebody's in crisis and they need help, she would notify the court, should also assist them if they need help getting services and that sort of thing. Maybe you can talk a little more on that, you know?
My job duties are clearly outlined in Iowa Code 229 and Iowa Administrative Code 441.
So essentially, the point of putting her in public health is, one, to provide, you know, a stable funding source for her, and I think the outreach and stuff that, that Grace does would really be beneficial, they could combine some of their efforts.
We won't know nothing until our board meets, right?
Right, right, whether they're willing to accept it's all, you know, I'd have to come back and tell you what they do and what they decide and whatnot, but...
But I do have funding in our budget for fiscal year 2026, for it.
Right, so we're not, this isn't asking for money. This is just clarifying her status, because she kinda needs to know where, you know, you know, what her situation is.
Yeah, to, a clarification on the funding is, I'm a county employee, and right now the law states that the region has to reimburse the county for my services. With the new system, the law will read that the county may seek reimbursement from the ASO, and nobody knows yet exactly what that reimbursement is going to be, or what the ASO is going to require to reimburse the county.
So this'll, we're gonna have to learn as we go after the 1st of July, in terms of reimbursement, what we can do and how to do it.
As far as the facility, um, working out of your car or...
Well, I'm hoping to have an office.
Yeah, that's what, that's what Ray stated, stated, so do we have, I mean, is there anywhere, where would we do that? Or is it...
We won't know till the 1st of July.
Till the 1st of July, okay. You think there may be room?
Here.
There may be, okay.
Because it would be very, very helpful to have an office.
Well, that would be wonderful, so people can know where to come and meet you and have it at the same place every time.
Well, it's just not being in the county. Most people don't know who I am.
Well, and a lot of these people will, or take Abby Center's services, so to have the advocate right here in the building would be really, really beneficial.
Just put her doors from, let's just lock down here.
Thing, let's go to...
Really good setup.
So at this point, is this disinformational, was that what Ray... I would say so, disinformational, right?
Yeah, it's just, yeah, I'm just telling you what we're working on, see what the Board of Health says. Grace is on board, she, she had a lot of questions, but we were able to answer them for her, and, and so that's where we wanna go with it, to provide stability for the advocate position and, and hopefully provide better, you know, more in-depth services this way.
I like it, Ray.
All right, thanks for coming in.
And then you got something else, yep?
Yeah, um, one thing that's become really apparent is that we would benefit from training, law enforcement-wise and some issues county-wide. And since Alicia has come, she has already been doing some training. She did some with the PD, Event PD, and one's the Sheriff's Department. She really enjoys it, she's extremely good at it. What I am proposing is to take the money from my incentive fund, which statutorily is set up to provide money for training equipment, things like that. So this wouldn't involve any, any money out of the county general fund in any way. What I'm proposing is to designate her as countywide training coordinator with emphasis on law enforcement, and then I'm thinking that the September trainings we do, have her probably do something, um, in the way of open records or using, you know, personal devices for work purposes. You know, we'll have to figure out what the biggest need is and go from there. I talked to, to the sheriff about it, he's, he's on board, he thinks it's a great idea. You know, this is something we ought to be doing, we ought to be training our law enforcement to be the best they can be. And, you know, a lot of them have never been to courtroom on a, you know, contested trial, so we wanna spend some time with, you know, how, how to prepare yourself, how to be ready, how to anticipate. You know, you can never have the training on, on the preparation of search warrants or the rest of domestic abuse, because there's a lot of rules go along with domestic abuse cases and, you know, mandatory arrest requirements and whatnot. So the need's definitely there, um, this wouldn't require any money to come from the general fund, as I said, and we have an excellent person in place to do it. So what I'm asking is to approve this resolution authorizing $5,000 this year and next year for her to do these trainings, and then I would also put in $2,500 a year for necessary equipment, our research, if she has to bring someone from the outside in, that would also be covered. So that's what we're here for today. I did a job description that would set out what she does, and amended to the contract saying she would get this extra $5,000 that would come out of the county training incentive fund.
Are any of these trainings mandatory, or are they just recommended?
None of them that we're discussing are mandatory, but if something were to come along and be mandatory, I wouldn't have any hesitation in her doing it, she's, she's more than capable. When she prepares for training, um, I've seen her, she sits down and she figures out, you know, what, what our target is for the training, does the research, develops all her points, and then when she has it all set up, she goes and she researches the law and adds case law into it to give law enforcement, you know, examples, you know, like, examples, there used to be, um, a practice where law enforcement would snag your garbage off your curb, and then they would take it back and they would go through it. Well, um, the Supreme Court frowned on that eventually, so, you know, training, trainings, like that kind of example is really helpful for them, because then it's more real life. And she brings in 25 years of experience in cases, and, and she's trained on the state level for the Iowa County Attorneys Association, she's done some trainings for them, so obviously she's very skilled at this.
So if, listen, and I'm just trying to, if, if an officer goes through this training and then it goes to court, can that be a plus or a minus to you if, if the, they say, "Well, you, you've been trained on this, you knew it, and you did it wrong," or that you would just say, "Well, I didn't know what was the deal," and then, or is that...
Well, the goal is to give them the training and do it right.
Do it right, exactly.
That's where we're at, and we don't, we don't, we want our officers to be the best they can be, and anything we can do to help them, we're gonna do. You know, we, we're hiring some really talented people, the sheriff's doing, you know, five seats apart, doing a really good job of bringing in good people, and we already had a top-notch law enforcement group, you know? When I was here 30 years ago, it wasn't anything like this, so, you know, I'm really pleased to work with the people we have, and if I can help them be just a titch better, then I think that's great, that's what we wanna do.
Lot of young officers.
Lot of them never been to a jury trial.
Be scary, your first time.
I, uh, I've been through it, I've talked to Ray about it, uh, I like the concept, uh, I think it would be a benefit for us.
I believe if, if it's gonna assist the law enforcement in doing their job officially and correctly, I mean, that, that would have to put them more at ease, knowing that they have some guidelines and know exactly what they're doing, so I think, I think it's a good idea.
I see it as a benefit, yeah.
Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion, uh, to accept, what, Resolution 2517? Do we need to read it, or can we just...
No, that could be...
It's good enough?
It was, it was, everything was posted, everything was posted in the office.
I will second that motion.
Okay, I'll call for a vote by resolution.
Tippit, aye.
Team an' aye.
Vols, aye.
Thank you, I think it's gonna be a great thing, and we're gonna try this for two years and see how it goes, and go from there, so...
So this will take care of both of them, then discuss the training, and...
And we'll be, I'll give you an update on the advocate situation.
And then, uh, okay.
You don't wanna do formal action on the amendment to her agreement?
Do we need to wait for her to sign it? How do we do the second one, Ray?
Well, I, I can sign it if you authorize me to sign it with her, that's what I would suggest you do, is vote, is vote to authorize me to sign this amendment to her contract.
Change her contract.
No, I can sign it and just file it.
Okay, you understand?
I do now.
Okay, you can, can I make a motion?
I would make the motion to authorize Ray to sign the amendment to the employment agreement with Alyssa Stack.
Okay.
Second?
All right, call for a vote.
Tippit, aye.
Team an' aye.
Vols, aye.
Okay, that one takes care of, now we'll get back, Ray, I hate to do it. The first one you discuss, it's, I see it on the memo, discuss and act on. So it really is much to act on.
We're not to act on until we talk to Board of Health, so I gotta get that squared away. And their meeting, uh, will be from Friday at nine, at 7:00 AM. So I'll go to that meeting.
All right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ray.
Thanks, Greg.
Mark, I'll start on you.
Uh, just following up on last week's conversation with my budget request for salary. You guys have all the comparables, so I guess I asked you guys to, to relook at those and reconsider to be more comparable to the other counties and cities with similar population.
Well, I, uh, had some thoughts since last week. I'm surprised at, uh, how many people like to watch this soap opera, and, uh, so when we had, when we had our, uh, meeting last Wednesday for the levy, we had a number of residents who were here, and a number of them brought up the situation where comparing what we do here in this county to other counties, and it was obvious by their comments that they don't care what happens with other counties and how it is. and how it is. It's, they're concerned, their main concern is what's going on. Aaron's Benton County. And while this information is all very nice and it's good to see, what it doesn't tell, what doesn't tell me, how long these people have been in their job. I don't know if this is their hiring wage or if this guy's been there 10 years. I don't know what their department side is. I don't know what their budget is and, and, you know, so that's all, it's, it's very nice to see and you did a great job putting it out there and it's nice to look at, but for me, it doesn't move the needle because I just don't know any information that, that concerns Benton County. Um, what I did notice in the, in the thing that you provided us is that you've done a tremendous amount of work in reducing the budget, operating the, your, your program more efficient, which is fantastic. Having said that, it is also something that the residents and we expect all of our department heads to do. We expect them to look for ways to save money and do that. And you've done that. You've done a great job of that. But I know, I can almost guarantee that if we move forward with a 14% increase in your, in your compensation, then in less than five minutes, we're gonna have a line out the door of employees and residents of this county who want to come in and play pin the tail on the supervisor because that is a lot. And, and I just, I think that when you have some more time at your position, um, that we can, I mean, we're looking at right now at 4.75, 4.8, above of what there was a raise that we had, we discussed it last week for how much, six months into it, what was that amount? I don't remember.
I don't know.
For, what do you mean, when you got the mid-year raise?
Yeah, what was that?
Um...
Is that a 2%?
It was a lump sum amount.
A lump sum? We don't have a percentage on?
No.
Okay.
It was to get him up to the Fair Labor Standards.
Right, right. Which we, we were required to do that, right?
Yeah.
So...
I can look at the amount.
Where I'm sitting, I, I mean, you haven't had a year in. We've got people that come to work every day, 120 people a day, who feel that their contribution to the county is equal to the next guy's. We've got people with 30 and 40 years. I don't know for a fact, but I don't think anybody's ever gotten a 14% raise in their first year of employment. Um, and I think that, that the 4.75 or 4.8 on top of the, the amount that you got at halfway point, at this point, um, for me, that's adequate. And, and once you have some more time in, you know, we'll look at it every year like we do everyone's wages, but I just, I just don't believe that I can move, move up at that number. That's my thought.
So the decision's made off of comparables for everybody else, that's gonna go away? You're not gonna go to the ISAC website anymore and look at comparables for wage? Is that what you're saying?
I'm gonna go, the only one that I've ever used ISAC for, and I've looked at it for years, is elected officials. I have never gone, I don't even know if yours is listed on ISAC.
There's like three of them.
No, I don't. I've never gone there to look. Uh, I will still go to look at that for the elected people. Uh, but like I said, I don't even know if yours is on there. I have looked at your, your comparables. It was good to know that a lot of counties don't have it set up like we do. So comparables are very small to start with. As far as when I say small, they're not a large number. We don't have 99 of them to go look at, like we do for the elected people. So that makes it rather difficult. Did, did we come up with a, we were looking to see what that mid-year raise was?
Hold on, I gotta go back a minute. And then my resolution.
What was it, $900?
Yeah.
Was it a lot?
Wasn't, yeah. It was, I think about that. Because for the Fair Labor Standard Act, we had to get him up to that threshold.
Yes.
Um, yeah. We, is that when you started? $26,000, is that correct? That's what you started?
Yeah.
Right, 56.
Yep.
And...
3% in July and then whatever the difference between the 58, 6 by 6 and 57 something.
Yeah. Just keep with actual resolution.
Oh, just a little less than $1,000.
Yeah.
Yeah. These are, we can do it by resolution, we just did it. And I will point out too, the share, or show your work is required by the legislation for the compensation work for elected officials.
Well, he got 3% last year in July.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then 5% again this year.
And he started in April.
Yep, 4.8. And then 5%, we agreed on, close to 5 of them.
Close to 5, yeah. Or 4, yeah, we just put a dollar amount. We said we'd take it to this amount, I think it was, and I figured out like 4.8 something.
Cause the chart you dressed up was the current page, 58.
That's what I'm right now, yep.
That ain't counting the 5%?
No.
I guess I'm inclined to leave it as is. I'm kinda agree with Bruce that you've only been here 11 months and 25 days.
Okay.
So...
Uh, maybe we could put it on, look at it in six months?
I don't know if we can, we can't do that.
If you set a precedent, you, you know, we used to do mid-year raises, so...
Okay. Then I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to go with you two guys.
And if you did that, why you have all sorts of people coming through in the middle of the year.
Right. I would like to see that position and I would like to see it in a better position, but when you put everything together, I think you're right with, people would line up at the door saying, oh, where's, where's my mid-year? The other one we had to do, the one in, what, first year, that was by law. We didn't get that raise. I mean, the, most of the department would give you 3% or 4%. Um, going with the number almost five, plus what you had before inside the first year, I think is, is for your first year of employment, I think that's, that's pretty generous, so...
We're gonna be near 8% for the first year.
For the first year.
Okay. Yep. All right.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks for your time.
Public hearing, number three.
Yep. This is, um, mainly we had to do it for, I'll tell you the different line items. We are adjusting with the mental health dissolving in July and with us submitting our claims to the region to get reimbursed. We wanted to amend to allow extra spending authority because we have to pay retention pay to those individuals. Um, and then some other things we wanted to finish out paying that could carry over into July so that we get that reimbursement up front, so we're not out the county funds. We want to be sure that we get reimbursed before that's all done. So $57,420 of that was for the regions, um, like I said, the retention pay, a few other things. And then, um, if you recall, the Sheriff's Office, we increased in Amendment Two with those wages for the new hires. So this budget amendment will reflect, um, $77,100 of it will be with the withholdings that go with those salaries. And then an additional $95,000 was for the radio equipment, weapons and other things that the vehicles needed, so. And then I had messed up on that capital projects, non-program area in my fiscal year two. Took it out of the wrong line, so I fixed that on this one too. So that was the capital projects, the Shelby, with that grant. So that makes up what I'm going to adjust after today's meeting and approval. I want to, I think I have two comments. And that would be, if you approve all that, it's part of Resolution Two, nineteen or older.
Is that 2518?
Yep.
I have any questions on that?
She answered them all. I was just curious, I figured out 600,000.
Yeah.
Taking away one and putting it to one.
So if you know in the state budget in that very back, we have the capital projects and we have the non-program.
Mm-hmm.
I took it out of the CDBG versus, yeah, so...
Got it.
We paid it correctly, I just want to make sure that spending authority was good.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve Resolution 2518?
I would make the motion to approve Resolution 2518. I'll second that.
Okay. Call for a vote, Resolution.
Tiffet, aye.
Team an aye.
Vols, aye.
Want two copies or just one?
Um, two please.
I have two from you. You wanna sign them both?
I give you two?
Yeah, you give me two.
Well, you're special.
Well, I, I wondered, I...
That's why I wear my copy, man.
You're still up, sir.
And Myron will be here for his.
Myron's killed him?
I believe so. He just emailed me his race session, so...
Okay.
Yep.
Will be some of that.
And then remind you of that work session tonight, um, in your packets, I gave you the full state budget. It's balanced out of right now until we do some more tweaking. Um, I have to tweak some for the Sheriff's employees after last week's, that amended resolution. So Carsten and I have been working on getting that finalized, so then I'll run you a new sheriff budget and then I'll have to make those adjustments. And then you have to act on if you discuss other ways.
Yep.
Look at the transfers, some of those final details because if the hearing is on the 22nd of April, um, I have fine others, we can have to get the finalized to get it scheduled in the newspapers for our notice. And then once it's published, we can't go above any of the spending authority, but you can still tweak it and adjust lower it after that.
Uh, report. I attended last Thursday, uh, the Heartland Insurance Pool meeting in Tama. Started at 10 o'clock and, and I was able to make, get home at nine to drive the bus, so that was good. This is an enjoyable meeting. I learned, I learned a great deal and the thing I like about this meeting is that the other trustees are all from other counties and the discussions are, you really, it's, it's really nice to hear about their issues, what's good, what's bad, and, and then we can, you know, discuss it. And it's, it's a nice, nice setting. Um, there are a few things that I would like to leave with Haley on to discuss sometime, some, some thoughts that they had and ways to move forward, and I'd like to bounce them off of you at some point in time so that we can...
Usually they show us like some policies that we could maybe implement in our counties.
Right, right. And I'd like to, like to go over that with you. I don't know what your schedule looks like. We can figure that out later on, but it, um, it's one of those meetings that it doesn't seem like you're there for three and a half hours. It just doesn't, so...
And their yearly, their yearly seminar is really good, too.
Yeah, that's coming out this fall, isn't it?
Usually in September.
Yeah. Yeah. So, did you go, leave it for that last year, right?
Yep.
That's what I thought.
And all the county officials are usually invited to that one.
Yeah, but I mean, they put on a great meeting, they really do. It's, it's, it's nice. The closed sessions are kind of interesting, but of course I can't go on about those. So, no, I, it was good. So how many did I have?
Myron.
Gear up.
Secondary Roads has an employee whose anniversary date is today. Started a year ago. Um, have a resolution here for Ron Reagan, uh, increase in pay to $28.84. Labor classification will change to a 4D. Ron currently runs a motor grader at the Van Horn shed.
I get a motion to approve the wage increase for Ron Reagan.
I will make the motion to approve the wage increase for, uh, Ron Reagan. I will second that motion.
Call for a vote.
Tiffet, aye.
Team an aye.
Vols, aye.
There you go.
There's two of them there, Ron.
Of course you need that, right?
Correct, yeah. It probably wouldn't require a resolution, but we have just done resolutions throughout the years.
Do we have record of why we changed it originally?
Good idea.
Along with his next payroll upgrade, he'll be leaking those in the program.
Since you're here, Mark, I'm gonna let you explain to the other two gentlemen here in the public that we had Thursday night in the city of Vinton. Can you give us an update on the box culvert's coming and extension?
Um, right out here on the east side of town, the extension of a box culvert under the curve, I had, got in contact with a box culvert contractor that's done some other work with us over the winter, I think Tracy mentioned that briefly at a previous meeting, to put an eight-foot extension on that box in the curve. Last week, they came in, poured the floor for that extension Tuesday or Wednesday and then poured the, the walls and the slab on top of it Friday afternoon out there. Thursday night, Tracy and I went to city council meeting here in the city of Vinton. Talked about that project, talked about a cow sharing suggestion. I suggested that the city pay for 75% of that box extension and the county would pay for 25%. That box and my evaluation appears to be probably between 95 and 100% within the city limits of Vinton. I had extended that project around the curve with the asphalt recycling overlay that I think just, in my opinion, vibrated some of that shoulder activity there and probably over, um, overly shown how narrow that shoulder is right there. I don't know that we changed anything. We raised the grade a few inches, but other than that, we didn't change anything. But since it was our project, that probably brought it to light, suggested that it be a shared expense, but I thought it should be more heavily on the city of Vinton than, than the county. And, um, outside of where things fit into their budget, the city mayor and the city council felt in agreement at Thursday night's meeting with that proposal. Just under $55,000 is what that extension quote was for that work. Um, and the city and the county are going to work together, I think we need some dirt and, uh, between the street department and the water department, I think the city of Vinton might have filter available for us. I don't have a pile anywhere close to work with, but, uh, once that concrete gets a little bit more strength here this week, we will jump on it and backfill it.
Thank you, Larry. Sounds like it's an all positive thing.
Very. Thank you.
Very, thank you.
But, yeah.
I hadn't thought about that before. That was just an accident waiting to happen.
Had some shoulder slough off over the weekend, or I think, and city was out helping the contractor and the county out there yesterday morning to pull off some of that outside wing farm because that dirt had fallen down on it. And we backfilled it loosely with some material. I need that strength, concrete to get a little bit stronger before we put some major pressure against it to backfill it, but it will be an improvement here when that's done, and that'll happen later this week, so.
Okay, good.
Mm-hmm.
Thanks, Myron.
Sure.
I did the HACAP, that's a Zoom meeting. I think I'm gonna go over the next one and attended in person. Extremely informative. Those folks really get a good bang for the dollar that is, is with HACAP. You know, they do, they have meals, they do food pantries, they do education, they have little, little kids' preschools. The amount of stuff they do is very greatly appreciated within the community.
Isn't there a little preschool in Vinton too, over by the meal site?
I believe so.
Oh, you're just telling.
They got the HACAP, had started over there. There's one in Belle Plaine. They do a great amount of things in the community. And if you want to eat at what folks in town call the Green Door Cafe, if you call them ahead of time, you can go down and have lunch any day.
Keep saying, we're gonna do that. It's a long day, we're gonna try it out.
I've eaten there before, it's very good. And then Saturday, and I know Bruce was there also. Went to the dedication for the Wildcat Park, which was very nicely done and a very nice turnout.
Well attended.
Very well attended, yeah.
They've done a lot of work.
Yeah, I'd just like to comment and give our conservation folks, there's a lot of people involved there, just give everybody an adobo and a thank you. It was a very nice program.
Buy a t-shirt?
I did not, but I saw you have.
That was thirty seconds in.
Hey! Well, I missed, guys, as I found out, I was not on the, well, two of them now. I missed the nine-one-one meeting last night. All this stuff went to Tracy, and I, I was a hundred percent, I was ninety-nine percent sure that I had taken the nine-one-one, but I didn't get notification out of anything, so I called Dean and he said, no, you're, you're not on this one. Okay, turns out I am on that one, and I missed notification from an Eldora at the Juvenile Detention Facility. So I think they've got me put on that one now.
You can remember her back, right?
Four.
That letter?
Every look.
Yeah.
Two percent is on that story, a hundred percent.
Oh, boy.
I had Easy Dog last week, and then I was on it, pretty quiet. Our gal, I think you guys maybe met her, maybe not. Ron, you might have. Tracy Albrecht, she's the gal that was in charge of housing trust fund dollars.
She's been out here.
Yeah.
Yes. She's retired in May, so I have a lot of.
Those little big shoes.
Actually, I just referred someone to her the other day, and they had success, so it was nice to hear the feedback that they got.
They got, they got somebody interested in her, kind of take her position, so we're gonna.
Been there a long time. As long as I've been in the county, I've known her from being born.
Somebody from within that knows the program.
Yeah.
At the, to our advantage.
Yeah.
That's another group that does great things for the community.
Yeah, they stuck a lot of money out here on the south side of town, pretty powerful, so.
For a very small investment on our part.
Yes, and then, you know, they fixed quite a few houses here in, at Atkins, I know, Belle Plaine with furnaces or water heaters, among somebody that couldn't afford.
Did she have a list of stuff that she had done?
Oh, yeah, yep.
I'm not sure if, have to look on our website. I hope we have a link. Sometimes we get calls and we know who to refer them to, but I wonder if there's a way we can promote that more, because people may not know it's available. Make sure, like Courtney would know.
Yeah, make sure our ladies know.
Like the housing projects and all that, they're just starting to trickle in right now, different projects. And last but not least, Polly Fix from Iowa City is supposed to be working around the courthouse today.
Yes, I have your official quote to sign. Well, it's just a quote, so I'll wait until the invoices come.
I signed it.
It's just the quote, so we'll wait until we get, sure we get the invoice.
Yes, 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 but I signed the one Friday.
Oh, yeah, that's the one I got on my desk.
Yes.
Authorized or working.
Good for it.
Yes, it was one of them over the phone deal, and I did not feel comfortable with. On their part and my part, I wanted everything up and up.
That makes sense.
So, and they also agreed on fifteen percent discount, so I believe, I don't have the information because I give it all to the maintenance guys, and I said, this is your baby now, you hold our hand, you show them where the pictures are and what's gotta be fixed. I believe it was eleven thousand. You've got a copy, you should have it.
It's on my desk, so I'll share with you later, too, if you'd like.
Eleven thousand and some change, and we're supposed to get fifteen percent off of that, so.
We have it all, I have those out.
Yep, yep. Well, makes sense. You got it, Matt Kins.
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm Bruce Visser, Mayor Atkins, and I just wanted to stop in today and invite Scott as well to come up. You know, recognizing that the, the cities and the counties have a cooperation, really, that's pretty close. We look at things like law enforcement, emergency management, the, the fire department, EMS responder areas, as well as the county road system. I mean, we're, of course, I see a lot of you folks at the meetings, too, so it's always a great thing. And of course, we have the folks at the county courthouse that support, you know, everything from record-keeping to our, the auders office, of course, works hand-in-hand with us on the budget information that we have to submit to them and get back from them, but I just want to introduce Scott Florrie, our new city administrator. Just put a name with the face. He's already been reaching out to a lot of you folks and things, but I just wanted to formally introduce him, and we're glad to have him participating in our, our offices in, in Atkins, and I think he's had a very compelling story on, on his history, but he comes to us from Clear Lake, and just glad to have him, but I just want to make him welcome.
So, Doug, thank you. I just have a couple notes. Met Tracy already, had good conversations with Haley, so it's a pleasure to meet you both as well, and as the mayor mentioned, I've been, believe it or not, I've been doing this a long time, so you blink your eye and thirty-two years goes by. I like to say I don't know that I necessarily look at, but, you know, I'd really thought about, if you know hypers, you know the rule of eighty-eight, and so this year I was hitting the rule of eighty-eight, and our daughters are both in Cedar Rapids and got a grandson there now, and so my wife and I had thought, in Clear Lake, we had a long, successful run there for almost twenty-four years I was there, and, yep, I grew up in Atlantic and got the opportunity to be the city manager there for four years, and my family all still lives there, and started out, my first city manager job was in Shenandoah down southwest Iowa, so you know the Everly brothers, or Earl May, or any of those, those kinds of histories there, but we raised our family in Clear Lake, and, you know, all of a sudden, one day, nobody's left anymore, and you find yourself, it's your wife and you in a big house, and that's about it, you know? We thought, you know, we really want to move to be closer to our daughter, so I'd contemplated, you know, I thought, well, I'll retire, find something in the private sector to do and draw my pension, and, you know, we'll live in the Cedar Rapids area. Had a colleague that mentioned to me that, hey, Scott, I know you want to get close to Cedar Rapids, there's a spot you ought to take a look at, I'm helping them out in, in Atkins, and so my wife and I went and looked, and we liked the town, and, you know, lo and behold, here I am. I had no intention of really continuing on in this, in this field, but I really like the elected officials that we have in the community, really like the community and, and the proximity to our daughters. I can, we can be to each daughter in about less than fifteen minutes, and our grandson, and so it meant a lot for my wife and I to be able to have an opportunity to be near our grandchildren when they start growing up. We don't want to miss out on so much stuff, and two and a half hours each way just was really not too conducive to some of those things, and so, you know, I've had a long history of working with county supervisors and auditors and assessors and engineers, and looking forward to getting to know everybody here, as Bruce mentioned, just really collaborative relationship, so in Saragorda County, your colleagues there I've worked with for many, many years, and when I was in Shenandoah, we had a situation where the, the city was actually in two counties, so that made it a little complex. We had a, kind of the highway dividing it, so I had to get to work with Page County and Fremont County both, so I don't, that was a bit unique for me, so it's nice to only have to work with one, one group going forward, but we're excited to be here and look forward to working with you guys all in the, in the future, so.
Do you know Adam?
Very well, know Adam Whitmore, you have your counterpart there real well, and.
Him and I sit on the ISACA executive board, he's the president and I'm the secretary.
Yep, no, I know Adam extremely well, and you may know Dale Sanderman from Cass County, and so, yep, I, again, when I was, long ago in high school, Dale was actually a teacher. He was my typing teacher. No one's ever heard of typing anymore, but he was actually the typing teacher, then.
I didn't know that.
Yeah.
I didn't know the manual.
Dumb spacing.
Yep, I think Dale hit me with a ruler a few times. No, I don't do that anymore either, but.
Must have been in your training.
Yeah.
I used to get the pin on the head.
Yep, yep, times have changed. I'm not sure for the better, but times have changed, yeah, so. Yeah, real excited to be here, and I've talked to, to the sheriff a little bit about our policing agreement, so just really looking forward to building a relationship here going forward. Again, it's, we, we moved into Atkins now, so my wife and I live kind of in the southeast part of town now, and I don't recommend moving ever again. It's, it's the worst.
Is that your kind of life right now?
Oh, it was one of those, I, I knew there was a never, a reason I never looked for any jobs, it was, I said, I don't want the hassle of moving, and then you go through it, oh, I don't ever want to do this again. It was tough, you know, so, but anyway, just, thank you, appreciate it, appreciate it.
Well, we'll be seeing you folks around in meetings, I'm sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you.
I have to turn on our camera system.
Yep.
I had one, one lady make comment on removing the rumble strips on Twenty-first Avenue south of Van Horn. She said she doesn't often drive, but, but she likes the rumble strips, so one vote against, remove that. And I explained to her that they were looking at putting in a new feature which would also get her attention. I didn't know the name of it.
Oh, that's the dip?
Yeah, instead of the rumble strips, it's the dip that will, I said that, I believe the DOT or Myron explained that it's, it's as effective as the rumble strips.
And Ron's gonna follow up with the better team letters today.
So I'll leave here.
You didn't get to either, right?
No.
Just wondering where you guys at.
Yep. Right in?
Nothing.
Don't bother them tonight, don't forget five o'clock and six o'clock.
I'll be yours.
I just had a quick question. With Mark Erickson's raise, you brought him up to the standard, right? And then you gave him a raise on top of that? Is that what you did?
He will on July one.
Okay.
Just like everybody else takes the first, first of the fiscal year.
I was just thinking, what, it wasn't included in part of that, bringing him up to the standard? That's what I'm, that's the point I was trying to get to. See what I'm saying? You take outs.
Yes.
You know, so, no, it was on top of.
Yes. Yes, sir.
Just curious.
Anything to add, Karen?
Want to make the motion to adjourn? One second.
All in favor?
Aye, just a aye.
Aye.
Done. Good. All right, I'm gonna go speak with Matt.